Good morning and welcome everyone to the September 2025 Austin P State University Board Meeting. Secretary, please call the roll.
In accordance with Tennessee Code 844-108, Section C4, trustees who are participating remotely will need to respond to two questions when their name is called. Can you hear me? Are you alone? If not, please identify the other persons present in the room from which you are participating. O'Malley, I'll proceed with the roll call. Christie Kanata?
Here.
Christie Gibson?
Yes.
Christie Jenkins?
Here.
Christie Johnson?
Here.
Christie Kimbrough?
Here.
Christie May?
Here.
Christie O'Malley?
Here.
Christie McGinnis?
I can hear you and I am alone.
Christie Mealer?
Here.
Christie Rainey?
Here.
Christie Rowe?
Here.
Christie Suggs?
Thank you. We have a quorum and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we get into the meat of the meeting, let me just officially welcome some of our new board members. So, a crazy welcome as our student trustee. I think we welcomed you at the last meeting, but welcome back. We're thrilled to hear on the board this coming year. Nancy is our, Nancy Suggs, our faculty trustee. Welcome to you too. We look forward to having you as an important part of this board. And then as we've grown in this last summer, we have three new board members around the table today. So let me welcome Curtis Johnson. Curtis, welcome. Mike Rainey and Ben Kimbrough. Welcome to all three of you. You're going to be terrific additions to this board. Thank you. Please note that there are items on your agenda that needs to be adopted. I move for adoption of the agenda if there's no discussion. Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Christie Kanata?
Yes.
Christie Gibson?
Yes.
Christie Jenkins?
Yes.
Christie Johnson?
Yes.
Christie Kimbrough?
Yes.
Christie May?
Yes.
Christie O'Malley?
Yes.
Yes.
Mealer?
Yes.
Christie Rainey?
Yes.
Christie Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda is adopted. The meetings for the June 6th and August 21st board meetings were circulated in advance of this meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. It's moved and sessioned. Secretary, please call the roll.
Christie Kanata?
Yes.
Christie Gibson?
Yes.
Christie Jenkins?
Yes.
Christie Johnson?
Yes.
Christie Kimbrough?
Yes.
Christie May?
Yes.
Christie O'Malley?
Yes.
Christie McGinnis?
Yes.
Mealer?
Yes.
Christie Rainey?
Yes.
Christie Rowe?
Thank you. In accordance with Tennessee law, if there had been requests from the public to address the board, it would occur at this point in the meeting. However, the board did not receive any requests, so we will move on to the next agenda item. And at this time, I'd like to recognize President LaFari, who will introduce today's campus spotlight.
Thank you, Chairman O'Malley. I am happy to introduce two of our college deans on campus. Dr. Dylann Armstrong Williams serves as the dean of the College of Behavioral and Health Sciences, which has about 125 faculty and staff as well as about 2,700 students, 2,800 students almost. She joined Austin P in 2023, previously serving as the head of Political Science and International Affairs at the University of North Georgia. She supervises nine academic departments in her college as well as the Institute for National Security Military Studies and the Institute for Community Health and Progress. Dr. Williams recently led a team to create innovative healthcare education pathways, resulting in the awarding of a one and a half million dollar grant from the Tennessee Higher Education Commission. Dr. Karen Meish has served as dean of the Austin P State University's College of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, STEM. She's been in that role since 2017, leading the university's second largest college with about 2,000 students and 150 faculty and staff. She's been at Austin P since 2007 though, starting as an assistant professor in biology and then rising through the ranks during her time here. Under her leadership, the College of STEM has achieved record levels of grant funding and many other accolades. And so I'm happy to turn it over to Doctors Meish and Williams.
Thank you for that. And we are very excited today to talk about, you may have heard of this, the new health professions building. So our new integrated healthcare facility brings to life what was once just a natural possibility. Genuine collaboration across healthcare disciplines that traditionally had remained separated until graduation. So a little bit of history. So our story began actually in 2015 when a team of forward-thinking professors in our allied health sciences department and nursing faculty published research that confirmed what different healthcare disciplines already had known, that when they actually collaborate, patient outcomes improve and medical errors decrease. Their solution was to bring nursing students together with medical laboratory science students in simulation exercises. 10 years later, and after many conversations and a lot of collaboration, we've created a space where the College of STEM and the College of Behavioral Health Sciences partner in educating the next generation of healthcare professionals. Our health professions building was designed with simulation at its core. In healthcare, we all know the cost when the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing. That's why our simulation spaces replicate real-world scenarios. From emergency rooms to home health visits, our students have the opportunity to practice communication, teamwork, and decision-making. These spaces allow us to run interdisciplinary simulations, nursing, working with medical laboratory science, social work, and psychology, because that's how healthcare really happens. Simulation helps ensure our graduates enter the workforce prepared, confident, and safe in their practice. Innovation is also taking place within our health and human performance programs. With the new technology in the building, students will be able to see real-time both skeletal and muscle movement and strategies that can be utilized to improve performance, decrease pain, and maintain overall health. What makes the new building transformative is not just the impact on healthcare disciplines, but its potential to bring in programs across campus. For example, our criminal justice students can now partner with nursing and psychology students to practice de-escalation and crisis response in controlled simulation environments. These are the same kinds of scenarios that happen in our communities every day. And this building allows students from different majors to prepare for them together. And with our advances in virtual reality, we see opportunities to expand even further, integrating law enforcement, social sciences, and health into shared problem-solving and student-centered interdisciplinary designs to reflect the reality of our communities. So our school of nursing is already one of the largest contributors to regional healthcare workforce. Building on this legacy of excellence with recent NCLEX pass rates being more than 98%, the new health professions building ensures that we can serve more students in the years to come. But this isn't just about today's classes. It's about preparing for the next decade of nursing demand in Tennessee. We're also growing the pipeline earlier. This past summer, 60 high school students joined us at aspiring nurses camps where they explored healthcare careers, practiced basic clinical skills, and imagined themselves in the very classrooms that you toured. This experience was funded through a grant from Clarksville Montgomery County Health Foundation. But of course, we know that our future programs will be improved by our THEC grant, which will expand and extend these camps to include pipelines for medical laboratory science, nursing, and radiological sciences. Whoops, sorry. Our community clinics are not only helping us meet the needs of tomorrow, but we're helping now. While we are training the next generation of providers, we are also delivering critical services directly to families across middle Tennessee. Shortages are stark. More than 3.2 million Tennesseans live in mental health shortage areas. The state faced a projected nursing service shortfall of over 8,000 registered nurses by 2030, and schools and hospitals are struggling to find enough speech-language pathologists, especially in rural communities. Every time one of our students provides therapy in our speech clinic or counseling in our psychology clinic, they are making an immediate difference for our region while also preparing to serve in the long term. Our psychological science and counseling clinic is home to both our counseling master's program and our newly accredited PsyD program, a major milestone that strengthens both our academic reputation and service to the community. Students in this program are not waiting for graduation to make an impact. They're already providing counseling and psychological services to clients in our region and addressing urgent mental health needs today. All the while, through their rigorous doctoral training, it ensures that they will serve Tennessee as highly skilled practitioners for decades to come. This dual mission, immediate care and long-term workforce development, is at the heart of what we do. The mental health challenges facing Tennessee are deep and persistent, and we know that fixes won't be easy. This is not a problem that can be solved overnight, but it is one that demands both immediate action and long-term vision. That's why the work of researchers like our doctor Leanne Willis is so important. Her studies on rural school counselor shortage are helping us understand the roots of these challenges and design solutions that can make a difference statewide. At the same time, our graduate students in counseling psychology are already stepping into the gap, providing care through our clinics today while preparing to become mental health professionals that Tennessee so urgently needs tomorrow. The Speech Language and Swallowing Clinic, this expanded clinic now features specialized labs for swallowing voice and cognitive communication disorders with diagnostic sessions for 30 to 40 clients a week, a critical service given that one in 10 Americans has a communication disorder. Students benefit from hands-on training and disorder-specific interventions, supported by in-room recording tech for instructional feedback. Our Speech Language Pathology graduates are in demand. 100% of our graduates are employed, mostly in Tennessee school systems, clinics, and rural communities. We've admitted three cohorts with a fourth incoming this fall, and we've submitted our accreditation application ahead of schedule to ensure this program of excellence continues. According to a 2022 survey administered by THEC, there are 32 Tennessee school districts with speech-language pathology positions that have been left vacant for six months or longer. This building, our clinics, and our programs reflect a deeply integrated model of healthcare education, technical rigor in labs, collaborative and hands-on interdisciplinary learning, and real-world impact through service. In the future, we hope to delve even further into the social determinants of health, such as access and lifestyle, all towards our goal of preparing graduates to serve, innovate, and to lead in Tennessee's healthcare future. The Medical Laboratory Scientist is a respected professional member of the healthcare team. Scientist provides patient care through the performance of a wide variety of laboratory analyses and procedures in the areas of clinical chemistry, hematology, microbiology, immunology, immunohematology, urinalysis, and body fluids. Pathologists and other physicians rely on the knowledge, skills, and integrity of the Medical Laboratory Scientist for the accuracy and validity of the test results. The Medical Laboratory Scientist holds a position of responsibility in the total care of the patient. The workforce implications are particularly compelling. Regional providers already express strong interest in our graduates recognizing the readiness for team-based care. This is currently resulting in a three-year average placement rate of 100%. Radiologic science is more than medical imaging. It's an obligation to physicians who depend on radiographic images to diagnose diseases and injuries. It's a commitment to patients who deserve compassionate care. Serving people by being a provider requires critical thinking and technical skills to offer the best possible care. Students are provided various levels of training in order to deliver high-quality patient care, resulting in a Medical Laboratory Science program that is respected nationally thanks to our many military-affiliated alumni and our online AS-to BS MLS program attracts students from across the country. The training for the Radiologic Science Program also is in high demand and has a five-year average placement rate of 100%. The Diagnostic Lab puts stated-of-the-art analysis services on campus and at the disposal of our future medical professionals. So students will get hands-on experience supporting vital testing services under the tutelage of licensed Medical Laboratory Science professionals. This lab will offer an array of services to the Austin P campus and to the Clarksville community. In addition to all of the great interdisciplinary opportunities you have heard about today, the other huge benefit that the new health professions building provides is space to expand these phenomenal programs. The expanded capacity for radiologic sciences and medical laboratory sciences will directly address critical healthcare workforce shortages. We can potentially double students and already have in radiology in each cohort. This increase in Austin P educated professionals will help decrease regional staffing shortages while increasing patient health outcomes. The work though doesn't end just because construction is completed. The need for local healthcare professionals grows with each passing year. In the health professions building, we're positioned to grow as well to meet the demand for new professionals and to continue to provide our students with the tools they need to provide impeccable care for those in the Clarksville Montgomery County community and beyond. This community deserves outstanding healthcare professionals, and at Austin P, we're committed to providing them. Thank you very much, and we will happily take any questions if you have any.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. Transformational and that building's an understatement. And just to point out, in this country, we are by 2032 going to be at about a million nurses short in this country. And I think there's 600 in the nursing program now. COVID has been replaced as one of the top 10 mortality rates in the country, but suicide has not been replaced. And so the efforts you're making in mental health are absolutely applauded. I have to last, one of the things you got wrong about a medical lab science building is that every hospital that I've ever been in, there are no windows, they're in the basement. You can tell the students they're going to be in the basement. But I applaud you for this because it's a huge challenge. During COVID, our hospital system went from $20 million in paying traveling nurses to over $100 million. And it didn't improve. Patient care, it was just a shortage that caused that kind of need. So the fact that you can tell a student when they come in here, and I heard at least in three, the 100% placement of a job, which is one of the reasons you get an education. And not only that, there's an incredible need for that, not only here in this area, but across the country. So I applaud you for what you're doing. And I wish when I was here as a student, I would have had those things available because you're going to learn those things at some point. Here, you'll learn them here, not a year or two into your job. And that's one of the reasons that these students get placed, so they're ready to go to work.
My question is this. I know there's universities and hospitals and there's partnership, but are we affiliated with a network of hospitals? And the reason I ask that is, is there a fee for these services that we're providing the community? And then do they pay off the fee? And then also, the larger question, given we just heard from an attorney, in terms of any insurance for suits and things like that?
So I'll take the first part of that question. So because especially in medical laboratory science and radiologic science and nursing, anywhere where there's that clinical skill, patient care component, we have MOUs or affiliation agreements with all kinds of hospitals throughout the year. Down Nashville, for some students, they've actually done affiliations or rotations even three hours away sometimes, just depending on what works out for them and the skill sets that they're doing. So we have those affiliation and MOUs with lots of different programs. The second part of your question was...
The fee for service?
So in terms of us charging fees to the community?
Yeah.
So we are actually trying to figure out that plan right now. So the community clinics, the goal is to never charge anyone that could never afford it. And so there are some areas in the diagnostic lab, for instance, where there are a lot of heavy fees associated with just the supplies it takes to actually run those diagnostic tests, right? So we would have to have some type of actual charge to pay for the replacement of all the supplies for that. But in terms of actually the community clinics, I'll let Dylann take that one on. But yes, we have had a more of a service mind for all of those clinics that we are currently operating. Yeah, so to kind of build on what Karen was talking about, we also have to make sure all of our nurses that go into hospitals, our nursing students, that they have liability insurance, and we do that. It's part of their fee structures and things like that, that we have that structure. In terms of the clinics, Karen's right. We're trying to explore to figure out what the proper balance is, how to make sure we meet the needs of the community while at the same time be sustainable enough to be able to continue to care for these services and have these services available. So we've just heard back from an external consultant. We might have some others and some more information to figure out the best way to navigate through that reality.
Thanks.
Other comments, discussion?
With the new two CONs for two new hospitals in Clarksville, is that going to give you even more ability? With 100% placement, it's hard to have more, but more success. But is that, are you looking forward to that? Is they come online?
Very much so. We think it's really going to increase demand, right? And with that demand, I think the biggest gift that we have that we've heard from medical professionals in the region is that they know the students that we produce from Austin P are high quality. And so people have approached me and said, we'd rather have a student in red scrubs than three students in other scrubs. So I'm not saying... Right, so because of that, that reputational brand and strength, I think is one of the biggest things we can not only provide to our students, but provide to the communities we serve. And in my opinion, we have to keep up that legacy of excellence so that our students will continue to be chosen for those.
It's fascinating to hear that, when you say that, because I think most of us have heard in the past about how good an Austin P nurse is. And that's coming from the old building, the old facility. And I can't imagine how much better it's going to be with students coming out of this new facility. You know, as a board, we certainly did none of the heavy lifting. But I asked Carol, how many years ago was it that we approved this health building, you know, in this room? See it open now and come to fruition is really a neat thing. So thank you and congratulations to both of you and the whole team for what you're doing. And it's got to help with recruiting too.
Definitely.
It's a shining light on this campus, so.
It was prior to 2021.
Okay.
I didn't find it that quickly in the board records, but it was funded first in 2122.
I said to Mike, it's a beautiful building too. It's a wow building as opposed to a square box that we typically see. So it's fabulous. Anything else? Dr. Williams, Dr. Meish, thank you very much and congratulations. I'd now like to recognize trustee May, Chair of the Academic Affairs Committee, to give us a report on their committee meeting this morning.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report for this morning's Academic Affairs Committee meeting. The committee's met and approved minutes from the Academic Affairs Committee meeting on June 6, 2025. The committee heard three information items today. Degree and certificate awards by type and academic year, program productivity report, fall census enrollment. There were no action items on the agenda. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee May. Now I'd like to recognize trustee Meiler, Chair of the Audit Committee, to give us a report on their committee meeting today.
Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from today's audit committee meeting. The committee approved the minutes for the June 6, 2025 Audit Committee meeting and Audit Committee Executive Session. The committee heard and approved one action item, and that was for fiscal year 2026 salaries and budget. The committee heard presentations on the following information items. Internal audit reports released between May 9, 2025, and August 14, 2025, and list of outstanding audit recommendations. External reviews performed by the Tennessee Student Assistance Corporation and the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, and see finally the Office of Internal Audit Fiscal Year 25 Year End Report. That concludes my report of the Audit Committee meeting.
Thank you, trustee Meiler for that report. I recognize trustee Kanata, Chair of the Business and Finance Committee, to give us a report on their committee meeting.
Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Business and Finance Committee meeting. The committee met and approved the minutes from the June 6, 2025 Committee meeting. The committee also considered and approved two action items needing consideration of the board. The first was the Lot 26 land lease, and the second was the Community Engagement and Sustainability Center renovation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Kanata. Trustee Kanata's report included two items requiring action of the board. Do you have a motion for action on the Lot 26 land lease?
I do. Your meeting materials included information on Lot 26 land lease. By direction of the committee, I move to approve the Lot 26 land lease.
So you've heard a motion to approve the Lot 26 land lease. Since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Christie Gibson?
Yes.
Christie Jenkins?
Yes.
Christie Johnson?
Yes.
Christie Kimbrough?
Yes.
Christie May?
Yes.
Christie O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee McGinnis?
Yes.
Christie Meiler?
Yes.
Christie Rainey?
Yes.
Christie Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. Trustee Kanata, do you have a motion? Well, I assume you have a motion on the Community Engagement and Sustainability Center renovation.
I sure do. Your meeting materials included information on the Community Engagement and Sustainability Center renovation. By direction of the committee, approve the renovation of the garage portion, 328 College Street, into the Community Engagement and Sustainability Center at a cost not to exceed 1.2 million, and approve a letter of intent to enter into a gift-and-place agreement between APSU and Leo &amp; Lilly V N to fund, renovate, and support the design, renovation, and construction of the building.
Thank you. Trustees, you've heard the motion to approve. Since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion on this project? Well, I think it's going to be fabulous.
It just is impressive to see all of the, I keep saying the word elevated, but we continue to elevate the campus surroundings. And that's great for students, it's great for the community, for the staff. So we're very pleased with all of this.
It's also in a terrific location. It's very central and visible up to the campus, so thank you. Any further discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Christie Kanata?
Yes.
Christie Gibson?
Yes.
Christie Jenkins?
Yes.
Christie Johnson?
Yes.
Christie Kimbrough?
Yes.
Christie May?
Yes.
Christie O'Malley?
Yes.
Christie McGinnis?
Yes.
Christie Meiler?
Yes.
Christie Rainey?
Yes.
Christie Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the Executive Committee report, and I'm pleased to present that report from this morning's Executive Committee meeting. The committee approved the minutes from the April 11, 2025 Executive Committee meeting. The committee reviewed and took action on three items which are on the agenda for your approval today. First action item is the Revisions to the Board of Trustees' Bylaws. By direction of the Executive Committee, I move that we approve those revisions as written. Since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Christie Gibson?
Yes.
Christie Jenkins?
Yes.
Christie Johnson?
Yes.
Christie Kimbrough?
Yes.
Christie May?
Yes.
Christie O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee McGinnis?
Yes.
Christie Meiler?
Yes.
Christie Rainey?
Yes.
Christie Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. The next action item is the Consideration of the President's Performance Evaluation and Incentive Plan for Fiscal Year 2025-26. By direction of the Executive Committee, move that we adopt the same evaluation criteria and instrument for the 2025-26 year that was used in the 24-25 year. This is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Christie Gibson?
Yes.
Christie Jenkins?
Yes.
Christie Johnson?
Yes.
Christie Kimbrough?
Yes.
Christie May?
Yes.
Christie O'Malley?
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee McInnis?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Rainey?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. And the final action item is the President's Employment Contract. Let me offer thanks to several people that helped put this together. preamble, I might say that we kind of discovered that Austin P was maybe the only, but one of very few institutions in Tennessee that did not have a presidential contract. Thank you for working year to year. And so the executive board, kind of led by Don, when Don was Chair most recently, with the assistance of Catherine Kanata and and Dr. Rowe, certainly with a lot of help from Donnell and Carol, we had a couple of different meetings where we tried to craft a contract for Dr. Lakari that was beneficial not only to him and Kirsten, but also to Austin P. Dr. Lakari, I think it's a universal opinion of this board, not only this board, but an awful lot of people in our community that you're doing a terrific job. We want you to be around for a long time. This contract is an effort to to make that happen. So your consequential leadership is a large part of why we're doing this. Oddly enough, Dr. Lakari was a part of this process, obviously. And one of the things that was most important to him was that if in the event of his demise or if he was to leave, that his wife Kirsten would have a place to stay and wouldn't be thrown out of Archwood right away. So kind of a small aspect of this contract, but very important, obviously, to the Lakaris. So I would ask anybody else for discussion before we vote on this officially. We also met, I might say, in our public session. We met earlier this morning to discuss the contract with the full board, and we'll be asking them for their vote here shortly. But is there any discussion? Oh, I need to make a motion first. Okay. By direction of the Executive Committee, I move that we approve the President's Employment Contract as written. Again, since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Now, any discussion, any further discussion?
Just, Mike, just one thing, Mr. Chairman, this the single we discussed about the phenomenal facility that we had in Health Science, and that's great in this facility we're in right here, but the most infamous part of any organization of the people in it. And I promise you, if you don't have good people, you don't have a good organization. And that is the key. You can have you can have the nicest building in the world with bad staff, bad leadership, and it's not going to be successful. I think we've been blessed here with great leadership, and that's one of the reasons that we, the Executive Committee and and the full board, decided to go ahead and and get a gift off to Lakari, a contract he so much deserves.
Amen. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, this is trustee McInnis, and I just want to say that I remember when those of us were on the Presidential Search Committee, and we looked at the candidates, and I believe Chairman O'Malley, you chaired that search committee. And I knew then that candidate, Mike Lakari, was the best choice to be Austin P State University's next president, and he has thoroughly lived up to that and exceeded all of our expectations. So I am in full support of this, and I thank he and the First Lady for all that they are continuing to do, not only for Austin P, but for the great university community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Anyone else? Is it your turn yet? Any other board members with comments? All right, you're up.
I just want to say thank you, of course, for this vote of confidence. Kirsten and I have had a wonderful four and a half years. She's been right there along my side. I call her the the chief volunteer for Austin P. And so she gets just as much credit as as I ever should. And so we're very blessed to be here. We're very happy, and we're looking forward to we're looking forward to many more, many more years here at Austin P. So thank you for the vote of confidence. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Secretary, call the roll.
Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Trustee Gibson?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Kimbrough?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee McInnis?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Rainey?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize now trustee McInnis, Chair of the Student Affairs Committee, to give us a report on their committee meeting today.
Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Student Affairs Committee Meeting. The committee met and approved the minutes from the June 6, 2025 Committee Meeting. There were no action items on the agenda. Vice President Clemens presented the following information items, food court expansion, GOVs connect, and implementing engage the Student Affairs Strategic Plan. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, trustee McInnis. Your meeting materials included information about the university's mission statement. I'd like to recognize Cory Harkey, Associate General Counsel, who will provide additional information. Cory?
Of course. Yeah, this is just a very small change to the commission statement. This is coming about based on just making it very clear that we are aware of the federal regulations and the new state law related to dismantling DEI. But we're removing one word from our mission statement so that we really can focus on what it is it's about inspiring the community of learners here. So so this is a posed one-word change to the mission statement.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to approve the university's mission statement as written?
Move.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve the university mission statement as written. Is there any discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Trustee Gibson?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Kimbrough?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee McInnis?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Rainey?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries, and thank you, Dr. Clark. Thank you, Cory. The meeting materials included information also about the institutional mission profile statement. I recognize Dr. Mitch Cordova, Provost and Vice President of Academic Affairs, who will provide additional information. Mitch?
Thank you, Chairman. Each year, the Tennessee Higher Education Commission asks us to review our institutional mission profile statement. This statement is an expansion of our university mission. For those highlights or unique characteristics, it is used to help feed for these characteristics within the commissions. While you propose changes to our statement, these must come to you for approval. Say we have before you a marked up version of the statement with proposed amendments. We've attempted to accomplish three things with these changes. First change is to represent our recent Carnegie classification to a master's larger research institution. The second change is the language you see in the strike-through font. We propose streamlining this text to better mirror our university's mission to serve all students. And finally, we believe it's important to highlight that we are the state's first and currently only vets Bravo campus as designated by THEC. We are very proud of this designation. So we seek your approval of these amendments to the institutional mission profile, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to approve the institutional mission profile statement as written?
Motion.
There are second. It is moved and seconded that we approve the institutional mission profile statement as written. Is there any discussion? Thank you. Secretary, call the roll.
Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Trustee Gibson?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Kimbrough?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee McInnis?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Rainey?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. The mission motion carries, and thank you, Dr. Cordova. At this time, I'd like to recognize President Lakari to give his report and also to report on any interim items.
Thank you, Chairman O'Malley. Well, the 2526 academic year certainly is off to a record-setting start, and we're really just getting going. And so I could not be more excited about what comes next for Austin P. And I'm eager to share some highlights of where we're sitting right now. It really is a great time to be a GOV. We've heard now, of course, that our official enrollment stands at 11,185, which is indeed a new record for the university, and we are up more than seven percent compared to last year. The freshman class is up nearly 12% compared to last year, so tremendous growth in in new student enrollment. This is the result of phenomenal work done by the Enrollment Task Force, the admissions and financial aid units run by Amy Corle, the Military and Veterans Affairs Division under Walt Lord, and all sorts of other people on campus to make sure that the the word is out about why it's a great time to be a GOV. In student success, of course, we want to make sure that our students are making good progress towards that graduation stage, and our retention rate is up more than two and a half points compared to last year. So we're making good progress, and I look forward to more as Dr. Clemens and Dr. Cordova start to forge a very deep partnership between student affairs and academic affairs. And so I look forward to the results of their reformulated student success task force. We had a very smooth start to of the year and a very fun move-in week, welcoming our new freshmen with a number of events and activities, all of which filled to capacity or even beyond. And so this freshman class is certainly ready to get engaged in campus life, and that's really fun. Our people in the Community Day of Service set a new record for the number of Austin P volunteers engaged in one day, with at least 1,780 members of campus providing more than 3,200 hours of service to the community. That's an 11% increase in the number of volunteers compared to last year. And so this new tradition of kicking off the academic year with with a service day in the community has really taken root here on campus, and I'm very, very proud of what we're what we're doing and the tone that we're trying to set with our students as we welcome them, that it's very important to give back to those around us. Of course, yesterday, we cut the ribbon on the Health Professionals Building, which is an educational facility that will more than transform, according to Dr. Rowe, and expand our ability to educate the healthcare professionals of the future. I'm so thankful for the support of the state legislature and the local community and the Community Health Foundation for for this project. It would not have been possible without without their financial commitment. Of course, football is up to a great start with an upset win over Middle and a hard-fought game against one of the best teams in the country at the University of Georgia, who we we head into our home opener tomorrow, ranked in the top 25. And so I look forward to seeing everybody at Fort Terra Stadium. Speaking of Fort Terra Stadium, we'll cut the ribbon on the Fisher Roberts Lobby of the Fort Terra Stadium West Side later today as a result of generous support from Mary Fisher and Red and Stephanie Roberts. As you, as you've probably noticed in the room, I have a number of new people on my senior leadership team. You've met because you've heard from our new Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs, Dr. Mitch Cordova. I hired him from our conference rival Florida Gulf Coast University, so it's good to see him in a red tie today. He got off to a great start back on July 1. His collaborative style is going to unlock tremendous potential as we as we work through strategic partnerships with between academic affairs and student affairs. So welcome, Mitch. The new Chief Strategic Communication Officer is Jenna Holloman. This is a new role, and having Jenna on the senior leadership team ensures that campus communication and marketing messages are now part of university decision-making. She was most recently in a senior leadership role at Fort Terra Credit Union and has been one of our most highly engaged alumni, and so she's no stranger to campus. Plus, her mom is a former college business dean, and so it's great to have you on the team. Finally, Jordan Harmon is the interim athletics director. He's been in this role for about a month now. So Jenna beat him as the newest member of this of this. So Jordan was in his role as newbie on the team for about a week, so he was able to pass that mantle along. And he's ensured that the athletics department has gotten off to the fantastic start that we've already seen. He's no stranger to campus, as you have all gotten to know him during his time as a student athlete here or more more recently in his role as the Chief Revenue Officer. But welcome to the team, Jordan. Finally, I want to welcome our our new trustees, Curtis Johnson, Ben Kimbrough Jr., Mike Rainey, and Nancy Gibson Gibbons, sorry. I've known each of you in other capacities, worked with you in other roles, and and I'm looking forward to working with you in in your new role. So thank you for your support of Austin P. And finally, your packet includes a list of contracts and agreements that have been executed since our last meeting, as well as state building commission actions that have occurred since our last board meeting. So thank you, and this includes my remarks.